Selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, October 15th. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody for weekly briefing? Richard?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Spending a lot of time up at the community center these days with Council on Aging and with the community center. Carolyn was not here tonight. She asked that I would be brought up to speed on a couple of things. They had a very successful Touch a Truck program there this weekend, and she wanted to do a shout out to Nellie's Swimsuits, who donated 60 costumes for our young residents of the community. And that Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. is the boutique, the boo-teek, with free costumes to those in need. Anything else, events, or information about the events is on the Facebook and website for the community center.
Great.
Community Center. Council on Aging, just briefly, we, I'm sure Chris will mention in his report, in the midst of interviews for new Council on Aging director, and things are running smoothly at the moment, thankfully.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else? No? Anybody for public comments or announcements? Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just wanted to update everyone, our next step in the cultural district designation is our first stakeholders meeting tomorrow night. This will be for the Harwichport Cultural District that we are going forward with, and it is at 6:30 at the Pilgrim Congregational Church. So if there is anyone in Harwichport that hasn't been invited already, that you are interested, please feel free to join us tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Pilgrim Congregational Church. The meeting for the stakeholders in Harwich Center will be October 30th at the Cultural Center Auditorium. And then finally, Restaurant Weekend Harwich is happening, so if you notice any great orange signs at some of your local restaurants, please go in.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Anybody else for public comments or announcements? No? Okay, can we move on to the consent agenda? Ed?
Yes, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move its adoption, including the minutes of June 13th, 2018, regular meeting, the minutes of September 17th, 2018, regular meeting, and September 24th, 2018, regular meeting. And to reappoint James Magnin to the Council on Aging as a full member with the term to expire of June 30th, 2019.
Check it.
Moved and seconded, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would have preferred this to be on the new business, because there is something I do want to say about this. In the agenda packet, it says, "Name previously omitted from reappointment list." Richard had already said this, and I just want to underscore, we sent the letter out, he misread the letter, because it seemed to him like if he wanted to be reappointed, he could just do nothing. It turned out that he needed to assent to doing it. That's why he didn't get reappointed, have no problems with voting for him, but this was kind of a self-inflicted wound. So it's not that we inadvertently left him off of anything.
Okay, so, do you want, are you?
I'm fine with it here, I just wanted to be able to explain that.
Okay, that's fine. So any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearings and presentations, the, for our annual portion, Bike Ways Committee?
Hi, I'm Franz Zaluski, and I'm the Chairman of the Harwich Bike Ways Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to take a minute to acknowledge one of our other, one of our members, Paul Guzai, and thank the other members of our committee for their attendance and cooperation. Our thanks also to Link Hooper and his staff at the Public Works Department for the maintenance of the trail. Our committee attendance is good, the bike committee has responsibilities, and other Last year, we submitted a CPC request for a light at the Pleasant Lake General Store bike crossing, and that was approved, and we would like to thank everybody for their cooperation on that. When the Highway Department has time, they will install that light, and this year, we have plans for a light at the North Harwich Depot Street Crossing. And hopefully, we will be successful with that. The lights are an inspiration to other bike committees. Recently, Brewster put in four lights across their town and their dangerous intersections. They're looking to, with CPC, with their CPC funds, get more in the future. Also, Chatham is looking at them. They don't have any as of yet, but we've been meeting with Chatham, the Chatham Bike Ways Committee, and they were very interested in getting lights and finding out how the Our committee meets with other organizations, such as Mass Bike, the Cape Cod Commission, Traffic Safety Committee, the Harwich Planning Department, the Harwich Highway Department, and our counterparts in other towns, such as Chatham, Orleans, Brewster. We have a meeting with all three of them tomorrow night. Let's see. We would like to thank the Harwich Cranberry Festival. We attempted, with their cooperation, we attempted to sponsor a bike ride last fall, last September, and didn't go well, but we will try again. Our main goals are to oversee the maintenance of the Old Colony Rail Trail, improve bike safety throughout Harwich, and enhance the biking environment. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? That's a great report, and we appreciate you putting it together. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, we all enjoy the bike trails.
Thank you.
I'm getting used to the traffic lights and the fact they come on and they stay on long after the bike is gone, and I'm watching those. And I do appreciate you and Link going after the tree roots in some of the areas, because they, they do come back all the time, so.
Yes.
There's true rough patches, but they're certainly, I can go around them.
Ed?
And we were just talking before the meeting, and there's some commemorative 20th anniversary Old Colony Rail Trail voter bottles that will be looking for a place to put on sale. They were left over from the bike ride. They're put on sale, and the proceeds will go into the Bike Committee's funds for, pay for some future improvements or supplies.
Thank you.
That's a great idea. Thank you very much, and we appreciate all your work on the bike trails. You do a wonderful job. Next, we have the Voter Information Committee. Good evening.
How are you? Chris Joyce, Chair of the Voter Information Committee, and with me tonight is Peg Rose, also one of the committee members. I won't review the, the report that you have in your packet, except to highlight one of our programs, and that was the forum for the candidates running for selectmen. We changed it this year to an evening program, and it was great. We had standing room only here, and terrifically thoughtful questions from the audience. Of course, they get to participate. The other thing you asked for us to report on was a number of absences. We had four since January. All of our members are sworn in, and our ethics training is up to date. All our agenda are posted, and we are current with approved minutes, except for June, which will be approved at our Wednesday meeting. A few things we're considering for late this year or early 2019, sort of redirecting a program that committee members in the past had put on, running for office, and to encourage people to, to run, and what some of the logistics are about that. And then we're lucky to have Emily Mylin on our committee, because she found somewhere in the archives of that library, a brochure from the 90s that the town of Harwich and the League of Women Voters of Cape Cod developed called Know Your Town. So we're taking a look at that, maybe put it online if we revise it, and of course, we have people to talk to, we wouldn't do it in isolation. We also found a brochure from Province Town called Town Meeting 101. It's just a trifold, you know, two pages. So we're taking a look at that also, to see if that might be a great handout to have around, especially before town meeting. But again, we'd check in with our stakeholders. The one negative thing to say is we're short one member, so we look for your support to help us fill out our, our committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or any comments?
I have one comment, if I may. Yeah, we continually look for volunteers for our committees. I know you've done this periodically, but it might be worthwhile having a session on describing what the committees do, what their mission is.
Yep.
So people are up to date, because I, I know I've sent stuff out recently on Board of Health, because I've been cornering people on that, but this question always comes up. Well, it is, you know, the normal thing, responsibilities, time involved.
We have done it in the past.
Yeah.
In fact, that's the reason I got interested in this committee, I watched that program.
Good. So you're, you're a testament to that.
I am a testament.
It'd be good to do it again.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think some of your initiatives that you're looking at are terrific, because I think Know Your Town would be really helpful, and anything that helps people understand the mechanisms at town meeting is extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, on to the Traffic Safety Committee.
Good evening all, my name is Jerry Beltas, Chair of the committee. The membership is made up of myself, Linda Sebula, Jerry Scannell, and then we have employees from the town, somebody from the Police Department, Link Hooper from the DPW, and Bob Cafarelli from the Engineering. In the past year, we've been working on the policy for crosswalks. The current chief decided that he didn't really want to work with it, so we decided to try and find out a policy, and it seems like they're very scarce out there. Bob found a couple, I believe it was from Concord and Lexington, which really don't apply to Chatham, so we called through that, and then working with the committee members and Charlene, we've got a draft going, and we'll hope to present that in the next month or so. Working in progress is Main Street, Bank Street down here, we've gotten concerns about pedestrian crossings. Intersection of 39 and Chatham Road, Chris and I have discussed that with Link, and it's just a god-awful intersection with about a 60-degree angle, it's hard for somebody to see around, so we're looking to see what we can do that, what the town owns the land, and where we have space for. Intersection of Miles Pleasant and South Street, that's kind of confusing, and the neighbors have asked us to look into it. We had some initial work done, and thought we were going to make some progress late this summer to have something done down there, but then snafu's kicked in, and right now, it's under study some more. And then there was one request for a speed limit sign out on Spruce Street, which parallels Route 6. There was an accident out there resulting in a fatal, and come to find out, there's no speed limit out there. So the police are working on that with the Cape Cod Commission, trying to find out, excuse me, what's going on. Parking at Cross Street and Route 28, Cross Street, Crossing on Route 28, Uncle Vinny's Road was a request for a crosswalk. That's come before us before, that's a state road, we can't approve it, so we looked at it. The location is horrendous for a crosswalk. It's on a blind side of a hill if you're going east towards Chatham, and if somebody's in the crosswalk, it's just going to be asking for a problem. And then sightline issues on Pleasant Bay and Route 39, we're still addressing that. There's been six accidents out there so far this year, and the severity has been much, much less than what it was before, so we're working on that. And the other thing we worked with was the Bike Ways Committee when they were looking for support for their North Harwich light, so. That's about it. All the members are sworn in, everybody's ethics is up to date, the minutes are up to date.
And you have enough members?
We're minus one member. Thank you for reminding me.
Okay. That's great, thank you, Jerry. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Let Don go first this time.
Don go first at any point. Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally agree with you about the crosswalks, to the extent they're not on state highways. But I do want to say, to a certain degree, that we, they have to be visible enough, and there has to be enough enforcement behind them. I know I participated in Harwich Historical Society on Saturday night with the graveyard walk, and I almost became a permanent resident of the place I left. People were blowing through all the crosswalks. The one in the middle of town, where they've got the unusual intersection, where you've got the stop sign off of Great Western, the stop sign off of Sisson, but no stop sign in the other direction, didn't seem to matter to anybody. And then trying to cross across Sisson, it didn't seem to matter to anybody. So ultimately, the success of this is going to hinge upon people actually knowing there's a crosswalk there, and they're having some downside to it if they blow through it.
Well, that's probably up to the board, because there was a streetlight policy in effect, and then when the recession hit, or some other problems caused it, they put a moratorium on putting up crosswalk, uh, streetlights or lights. And some of the crosswalks probably should have a light on them. I know there's one out here at Old Colony, and Oak Street could probably use one, but there's a moratorium on putting them up, so if...
I can assure you, this wasn't a nighttime issue. We made eye contact.
Okay, well then, throw something at them.
Didn't have anything available, but thank you.
Ed?
Yeah, earlier this summer, we had a neighborhood come to us and ask to put in a removable speed bump in their neighborhood, and we granted it. There was some discussion about looking at the issue and developing a policy on it, and I was wondering if that was something that your committee would have interest or be appropriate to have some discussion over the issue.
I spoke with Steve Tupper from the Cape Cod Commission. He describes it as three different types of speed humps. You've got a speed bump, which is very small and shallow, a speed bump, which is much more, and then there's a speed plateau or a table where it goes up a distance and then drops down. I don't have real strong opinions on either one of them either way. The neighbors I know want something down there. Talking with Lieutenant in the Police Department, this summer was a very good summer for the tourism industry. By gauging the amount of traffic complaints we had, there was loads of them, and when the season's good, there's more complaints. I don't know what the real reason they wanted it down there. There's other traffic calming measures that are out there. They can take and put bump outs on the road so the road, so they have to serpentine around. They can leave their cars in the streets, it will slow traffic down, so the people won't be going down the road, other than speed bumps. There's other traffic calming measures that can be used.
I know, I know, I know that the problem the board's going to have going forward is, now that we've granted one neighborhood to install a, a set of speed bumps, when the next one comes along, unless we develop a policy on it, what's, what's going to be our fallback for judging future requests going forward?
Chris?
I do think, I was here when that committee was formed, I think Larry was, was Chair, and, you know, it was my recollection, and I certainly brought it up that night, that when these requests come in from residential neighborhoods, that they be referred to the committee, have the committee review for, you know, whether it's needed or not. And then, in this case, we had Steve Tupper came in, and the gentleman from the county commission, sorry, and he came in and, you know, recommended the location and the style, so that way we had some professional. But, you know, I'm very uncomfortable, and I think, quite honestly, individual board members should be uncomfortable making recommendations without any engineering behind them. And I think the reason why it was originally put in was to go through a more deliberate process to, to make sure that they are located in appropriate locations and done appropriately.
Yeah, I agree with that, that was my memory. On the other hand, you know, government's frustrating, because we can study things to death, and somehow, we need to move ahead on this. You know, have step one, step two, and, you know, as Chris says, bring the regulatory expert in, and then move ahead on that. Because as, as you imply, Jerry, tourism is booming, and that means we have more accidents, so we get more pressure on you and your committee to take action. We have a lot going on now, too, and I encourage you, and Chris can help on this as well, to link up with other, not only Link Hooper, pardon the pun, but with other, other committees. We have an accessibility rights committee that's looking at grant money to look at, and they've walked, looking at sidewalks and crosswalks. Obviously, Harwich Incentive Committee, that's going to be one of their functions, is to look at Harwich Center. And so there's a lot, and we'll need to, Chris, I think with your help, and Jerry, and your committee, link it together. I know I'm, well, my actions after this, be sure that I get you on the mailing list of both, both of those other committees, so that you're informed of when they get together and can have input into the, and vice versa. Because we do, we do need to move, it's getting, you know, it's too late, if people start getting run over and we aren't taking action.
Go ahead, Ed.
Well, some of the things, like we were working on South Pleasant and Miles, we had that come in prior to the summer and the spring, we had the committee, Cape Cod Commission do a draft, the rough draft came out, and then it hit a snafu with the pole being moved, and there's the shortcut that's there being moved over. Going back to speed bumps, placing them in a neighborhood might be okay, but along the main drag, where police and fire are responding, absolutely not, you're not going to be, you're going to be blowing out suspensions on cars, and response is going to be slowed down. So some of those things have to be looked at by the police, the fire, the Highway Department, Engineering, and then the neighbors themselves. Chris had alluded to a previous job he was working at, where neighbors put in a temporary speed bump, and the landscape trucks going over it made more noise than the traffic was a problem. So there's a lot to consider when you, it's not just, all, all ideas out there are not good.
No, I agree, and I think we've looked at, there's been a variety of calming, as you, calming solutions other than speed bumps, and they have an effect, too. Plus, as, as Don has mentioned, we may have to pull them up and do some more enforcement.
Right. And, Ed, go ahead.
Can you refer to two other committees? Which two other?
The Harwich, the Center, Harwich Center is, is looking at this part of it, and it's become a big issue with the, you know, what we used to call disability rights, now accessibility rights, because, you know, as we know from Jenny Hoo from the library, that's a concern going back and forth there. We also have a lot of sidewalks that don't meet, there's no, we don't meet any of the safety standards for visually impaired, for instance, you can easily walk off the sidewalk into the street. But that also moves into the, how they interact or intersect with their intersections, bad grammar, but, so those are two committees that we need to look at. We have a Highway Department looking at it, and I think we're always, I know I'm always a little concerned of the lack of response from the state when they're involved. And, you know, somehow, we need to find a way to get some more reaction on that, too. But those are the committees I'm talking about.
And those committees are discussing the issue of speed bumps?
Not at all.
Okay.
They're talking intersections, sidewalks, how to slow traffic down. And so generally, they're, they're concerned about the speed, but not speed bumps.
My concern is, we did, did allow a neighborhood...
Oh, yeah, I got that, that's a different...
You know, and, and I think, you know, we need to, you know, and obviously, you're not going to put it on a speed bump on Route 39, or, or on Queen Anne, but we need to formalize those sorts of parameters in some sort of policy, so the next neighborhood that comes in, and is a little bit more, more a main street than the street that we allowed it on this summer. We have some, some standards to judge the application on.
Right, well, I mean...
Somebody has to put together that policy, and I just thought it might, the traffic and safety...
Well, the committee was, the, across, the speed bumps down in, in the campground was going to go to the committee, and Chris was all set to do that, and one of the selectmen said, "Let's deal with it now, because we're an advisory committee. We give advice to Chris, he brings it to you, and you act on it." So it skipped a beat, and it went directly to you. It got acted on, a spur of the moment, a lot of emotions in the room. We can deal with that a little slower, and bring some of the emotions down. Myself, I would have said, "Okay, let's try some other traffic calming measures down there first, or put in movable speed bumps, because the snowplows are going to get wrecked, and, you know, it costs the town money to do things," and then, "Uh-oh, we didn't think of that."
Right, and to that point, and that's what's going to be my comment, is we have committees for a reason, and in that scenario, we didn't rely on our committees, we actually went ahead and made a decision without listening to our committees. So to Ed's point, if we're going to have, you know, various requests come in throughout town, and for obvious concerns, we should have a policy and a procedure that's uniform in assessing where we're putting them, what we're allowing, otherwise, it's going to be chaos. So I think, you know, safety, and Link had put together a recommendation not to install them, but the board acted differently. So if we're going to have committees, we should at least appreciate the input, so. Thank you, Jerry. Does anyone have any other comments?
Do we have one comment you were going to make, or not?
Thank you very much for all your work, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, on to new business, support of the historic designation of the West Harwich School Building.
So, Madam Chair, maybe I'll kick this off a little bit. In terms of the, I did provide in the packet this time, the Preservation Massachusetts Letter. We did send it to KP, we hadn't got, we haven't got a response yet, but in rereading it, I mean, it's one of the things that, I mean, this is from their own letter.
Yeah.
Listed most endangered historic resources only in honorary designation, it is not legally binding in any way, nor does it insinuate any regulatory authority on behalf of the Preservation Massachusetts or the nominator. The program is not to be used as a negative or smear, and we encourage positive collaboration with all parties in working towards a solution. So I think what was presented the other night was, you know, a fair characterization of what this group is attempting to do. I think I've said, I did try again today to reach out to Mr. Igo, who drafted the letter, I was unsuccessful in connecting with him, but in terms of the, the material, I, I think it is pretty clear that this is a support services type to encourage people to find alternate uses for the, the site.
Right, and I, I did receive some information Sally had passed on about the fact that it wasn't selected this year, so it's still in the running for, you know, going forward, but this year, it wasn't selected, so, which, which really just brings us back to the conversation we had last week, on where, where do we go? So, Ed?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Chair to write a letter on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, supporting the nomination of the West Harwich School House to the Preservation Massachusetts. of the West Harwich Schoolhouse to the Preservation Massachusetts Most Endangered Historic Resource Program.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, uh, related as well as the West Harwich School Building RFP discussion. So we had an RFP go out last year.
Actually, we were out in seventeen.
Sorry, was, oh, wasn't it?
Been a little bit.
Oh, that was last year.
Yeah, I guess it was last.
I'm like, oh my gosh, have I missed a year?
Is it nineteen already?
Yeah, like, I blinked and it's nineteen.
But before the, the board on seventeen got seated.
But in any case, we had an RFP go out, and, uh, we didn't, we didn't get much of a, we didn't get any response, correct?
I don't believe in that one, we did receive any response.
So, uh, the discussion on, you know, how, do we wanna go forward? And, and that RFP included the language on a license agreement, which we talked at length about last week. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For me personally, I mean, this was prior to Larry and I coming back onto the board, but, yeah, this, no offense to anybody, but this is convoluted, this RFP. We didn't need an RFP when we entered into the license agreement in the South Harwich Meeting House. It's almost daunting if you just read it without any background, and you just receive it, and you start talking about, okay, how much are you gonna pay us if, uh, you're gonna relocate it? What's the purpose of it? And, uh, it bounces back and forth between dismantling it and moving it. But I, I might also add, having been on the committee in the nineteen nineties, as, as a teenager.
Yeah, right.
That the, there was a, a committee that studied this for the town, and actually recommended dismantling it and moving it, but there was never any consideration of selling it, and having somebody dismantling it and moving it. So, just reading this RFP, it bounces back and forth between two different types of purposes. And I'm not even sure, especially now that we've gotten no response to this, uh, I'm not sure what the point would be in going back out, rather than just entering in. If we can identify a group, Sally, um, that, that has a passion for it, just like Judy had for the South Harwich Meeting House, and feel like you wanna adopt it, uh, to do what they did, model it after that. Not that you're gonna take it for your own purposes and start charging people to come in for some events that you wanna do. Uh, I'm not sure we need an RFP. We could go to the next step and start developing, uh, a license agreement, you know, cooperatively, and then we, it'll still come back here.
Chris?
I just, uh, you know, after the last meeting, thought about it, and certainly, this has been on the radar for the entire time I've been the administrator. And, you know, I, I think Don brings up a good point, that, you know, if you don't have a purpose, and if you don't have a group behind it. And I think that some folks have reached out to the planner, and they're scheduled to meet, I, I've invited myself to that meeting. You know, I think what I'd like to do is, is try to explore, uh, a little bit, what, what do we have as ideas and options? Share some of the license agreement work that we've already done, uh, and we have on file with the, uh, the South Harwich Meeting House. And, and, you know, give us a little bit of time to see what we're able to put together. And if the board would keep, uh, you know, an open mind to, you know, the different concepts, uh, you know, let, at least explore and see what potentially could be done.
Totally agree.
Yeah, and I, I do think that, uh, I do think that some of that conversation that came out and led us to do the RFP, if I recall correctly, was because it didn't get support at the town meeting. And so, I think that the, the board at the time was trying to look at some other way to handle it. But to your point, you know, if, if we don't need to go that route and do a licensing agreement, why wouldn't we do that, so, Ed?
Well, you know, I looked at, and I read the RFP, and it's pretty evident why you didn't get it really, any particular response. Because the first bit of information that you asked be provided is, where are you gonna move it to? And, uh, moving it has never been in, in my interest, um, as I understand, uh, uh, the, the federal regulations on, um, getting a building declared, uh, put on the National Historic Register. If you move it, you've eliminated all possibility of doing that, because, uh, part of the historic nature of a building is its context. And when you move it out of its context, it, it loses, you know, so, why, why that was even put in as part of the RFP, I, I don't understand.
Well, just in my own defense, that, you know, we, we bring these back to the board, and as the board changes, concepts change.
Not, not blaming you, I just.
And, and I remember that conversation clearly, because, and this, and this introduction in the first, uh, sentence talks about, um, from parties interested in using or relocating, we were trying to add the relocation as an added incentive. So that if we didn't get anybody who was interested in using it, that we also had the ability to possibly have somebody who might wanna relocate it. And, and I believe, further within, it doesn't restrict you, um, from putting it on the register. But it does talk about the fact that it can also be used to qualify for the, the vicinity it's in, even if the building itself doesn't. Because currently, if I'm reading correctly, and I recall correctly, there's vinyl siding on it that would have to come off to make it officially historic again, I believe. So, that, I think that was another reason, was if you didn't have somebody who was willing to go down that road, but wanted to preserve the building, but didn't wanna keep it there. It was really to broaden the ability to hopefully keep the building, so. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just to clarify, not that that was option A, but in nineteen ninety-eight, when we did the first review of this, the reason that that was on the table was, we had a preservationist come up, uh, from Williamsburg. And it was a Williamsburg kind of, Sturbridge kind of model, where all those buildings weren't originally there. I'm sorry to debunk that to people who visit the places, but those, they, they were moved. And if indeed, the, the alternative was to completely demolish it and have no building at all, it was considered to be an option at the time, to move it and bec- and make three sisters up in the middle of town, between the Brooks and Academy, the, uh, Sisson Road, uh, Schoolhouse, and that.
Remember that.
Now, that didn't come to fruition. Uh, and interestingly, it didn't come to fruition, because town meeting voted for it, but it failed, uh, at a dead exclusion, because, uh, somebody decided to get a little greedy, and set that up so that it was a two and a half override, so that every year, from the year after you moved it, you continue to have that money as an override, carry it forward and compound it by two and a half percent. Uh, the voters didn't agree with that idea. But, uh, having said that, uh, that wasn't plan A. Plan A was, fix the building in place, try to create a, a use for it, uh, and anchor the, the community. And there certainly wasn't any talk at the time about trying to recreate the Captain's Village, uh, and get back to the flavor of West Harwich as a village. So, I would agree with Ed, I mean, ultimately, the context means something, uh, if, if we can do it. I said it last week, I'll say it again, uh, it, it may be daunting to people that this thing is moving kinda slow. But if the alternative is tear it down, there's no going back from that. There's nothing you can do once this thing is taken apart and torn down.
Ed?
Yeah, just, just a comment, you know, when the, um, we're all looking for some sort of use for the building. And I, you know, and, uh, in the discussion, there's been, uh, a lot of conversation about the, the process that was, went through to, to address the, uh, South Harwich Meeting House. But, for many years, that was referred to as Thompson's folly. Because he, he advocated that at town meeting, that it be bought, but he didn't have a use for it. But he just felt it should be saved, um, as a historic structure in, in town. And, and, uh, over the years, the town put in certain amount of money, just to maintain semblance of watertightness. They put a new roof on it, and a variety of other things, before a use group came forward to, with a, with a dream for what it could be. And, um, once that, that group came together, they, uh, did, uh, a variety of fundraising, and raised some funds. And they raised a fair, a fairly sizable amount of funds. But, in, in the end, uh, when you look at, at the, the project, it's a wonderful project. But through the CPA funds, I believe the town put in some, uh, two or, two or three times the amount that was raised privately. And, you know, so to, uh, you know, many times, as this has been discussed, the, the, uh, belief is that, that whoever comes forward has to figure out how to raise their own funds to do it. And, um, you know, my feeling is, that's an unreasonable burden to place on what is essentially a town responsibility to maintain its historic sites. And that, uh, while we're waiting for that use to materialize, um, we're not doing the building any good by not addressing some of the, uh, needs that the building has, like a new roof, uh, to keep it watertight so, uh, more damage doesn't ha- happen, um, anyway.
Duncan?
Uh, good evening, Duncan Berry, from West Harwich. Uh, just, you know, it probably takes two to tango, so, I think part of the thing, the difficulty with the RFP process is, it's like a salvo goes out, and then you shoot one idea back, and that's it. And we, one of the things that I think we're kind of dealing with is, we've got eight to ten ideas we're batting around, and we don't really necessarily have an internal process for evaluating the viability, the economics, and the kind of legal constraints. And I, last time, we went through the RFP process, I think one of the off-putting components was the exposure to liability, uh, and other kind of legal encumbrances that, you know, I guess without the, the, the su- the support of the town, would be kind of challenging to do. So, maybe for, with the two to tango mentality, what, would it be, make sense for us to give you a checklist of the kind of topics that we're thinking about? Whether, what you can say, no, we should absolutely not do, yes, this is what we're talking about, let's talk about this offline, and have, let's say, a kind of a, you know, something X camera, or, you know, uh, you know, X official conversation? And then, pull together something that's more in line with what you want, that's kind of comes from our, what we want, so that the RFP process is a little more streamlined, instead of, no, then we'll do it next year. It's like, we don't lose so much time. I'd be delighted to get something into your email boxes in the next seventy-two hours, that kind of consolidates some of the things that we've spoken about. Everything from like healthcare issues, to, you know, um, using it as a satellite for other entities in town that are already well-funded. So, I'll just toss that out there, if that makes sense, delighted to do it.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I, I actually endorse what Chris was, uh, trying to do, skip the RFP process and start meeting with you folks. But, uh, the one, the one caveat I give you is, we're looking for a loving family to adopt the building. So whatever it is that you wind up saying that the purpose is going to be, to Ed's point, you need to be able to pull together whoever it is that's interested in saving that building, and demonstrate that you have a commitment to fixing the building, through whatever the funding might be. It might be fundraising, NCPA money, it, it, uh, it's unclear to me right now, but the first step would be to meet with the town administrator, blow past, blow past this RFP process, and, and understand that there's something important involved in, in getting together a group of people who were committed to this thing. Because if, if you're just waiting for us to approve a purpose, that's, that's not the point.
Uh, Larry?
I'm on board with, with the discussion. My, uh, my, I only have a couple of points. One is, is I'd like to have a clear deadline on when you're gonna come back with your ideas, when we're gonna move this forward. Because we've missed CPA action this time, or CPC committee. But we need to start moving on the, uh, doing minimal repairs to get it going. I think, uh, part of our role, Chris, would be to, uh, summarize, if you will, uh, some of the information we already have available. The coastal engineering, uh, look at the report. Uh, those get very lengthy, so I'm not sure we need to bury people with, you know, fifty pages, but at least the, uh, the structural details. Uh, I think we may have some idea of what the costs are to make some of those repairs, which would be interesting, you know? And, uh, I agree, if you guys could come back to us with some ideas. And I was, I, I think you need a timeframe of, of a couple of months, so we can start getting prepared. You know, next, late next summer is when we start needing some concrete for, uh, CPC, and that comes faster than, than you think.
Right.
And, you know, we want, at, at this point, I think we all want action, because Chris says, we've been, and Don's even, I remember when they were trying to move the house, but, you know, move it up to the center, but we've been talking about this, uh, you know, after a while, you gotta do something.
I know, I was on the historical committee in, like, ninety-two, so.
Well, you, well, you were in the five.
I, I didn't even think about how many times. But, um, also, just, I know that Chris had mentioned that there was a, um, issue about insurance coming up, and that this was part of the reasons for having, you know, um, we also spoke, and we would be willing to discuss stepping up and making that as like an opening, um, gesture of goodwill, is to cover, let's say, three to five years of insurance, right off the bat.
Yeah, I, I, we had, the meeting is Monday, on the twenty-second, that we're getting together.
Right.
So, you know, I think, I'll try to bring to that meeting the, uh, material on how South Harwich Meeting House has evolved, and, and the arrangements there. And, and, you know, I think having a discussion about how the town has done this successfully in the past.
Right.
To, to kind of move the discussion forward.
I think that that's, you know, the one thing we have to keep focused on, is whatever way we can do something to protect an asset, a historical asset of the town, but to, to not put more of a burden on the taxpayers who are already facing, you know, sewer costs, and, you know, uh, we've got additional DHY, uh, conversations, uh, and never mind our Seco Tucket project, and all, and all our other pieces. So, again, it's a, it's a great, a great effort, you guys have put a ton of effort into it, and we certainly appreciate it. And, you know, I think overall, we need to be careful, we wanna protect our assets, but we wanna protect our taxpayers, too. So, that's really the general gist, I think, of what, why it's been such a difficult conversation, so. Sally?
I agree, I'm a taxpayer, too. Sally, Sally Urbano from West Harwich, two things, I wanna applaud you, and thank you all for getting us on this so quickly tonight. It's amazing, and I really appreciate where you're going with this support for historic preservations in the town. It's really delightful to see. And I'll close you just with one thought, because I never know when, you never know what's gonna go through your head when you stand up here. Really, literally, today, I found, um, a document, it's my grandfather. And he graduated from Harwich High eighteen ninety-six, and he was selected to give the speech, um, about the class. They had nine scholars that graduated that year. Uh, and so, the motto for that year, for the class, was, "Success is attained by constant trying." I just wanna say, that's this group, they've been doing, they've hung with us for five years, they've put in a lot of blood, sweat, and money, by the way. So, um, I appreciate them, too, so, thank you very much, and I look forward to getting together with Chris and see if what we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Si, and thank you for all your effort as well. Okay, um, on to, uh, DHY Clean Waters Discussion, participation by Selectman Howell.
Madam Chair, maybe I'll, uh, just kick things off, um, the DHY group has, uh, two selectmen from each of the communities. Right now, it's only one selectman from Yarmouth that participates, but two from Dennis. And the thought process was, as we progress in these negotiations and get to a, an agreement on how this, uh, regional partnership would be, or community partnership would be governed itself, uh, having two members of the board would make sense. Uh, the board had previously already appointed, um, Selectman Ballantyne, and then myself, obviously, I'm not a selectman, so I, I can't perform that role. And I think the, um, the discussion was, and we just didn't have it on the agenda, was to appoint, uh, Selectman Howell to join that group, so there'd be two delegates from the town of Harwich for those negotiations.
And I covered for him last time.
And he actually attended the last meeting, so he's getting up to speed.
And I'm sure he did, did a great, so is that, is on agenda, so I can nominate Don for the?
It's formally on this agenda, so.
Okay, I move that Don join the DHY committee as a selectman's representative.
Okay, moved and?
I assume Don, that's okay?
Second.
Well, you said, did you second it?
I seconded it, so it's okay.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I don't trust you, if you start throwing things at me.
Oh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, we're going to, oh, sorry, on to the Board of Selectmen, goals and objectives. So, I sent you all my goals and objectives, and we really need to finalize this, so, I didn't get any other goals and objectives. So, if, yeah, Don?
The budget message is a budget message, but in terms of the one goal that I think is really important, and you and I have discussed this in the past, is, we have to pay attention earlier in the process to voting positions. So that we don't get caught up in the last two weeks, just, uh, making a motion that covers eighty- just making a motion that covers 82 warrant articles and approving of them. So that would be paramount to me, that we methodically go after this, that we do meet with FinCom at least once as a big meeting. But that more importantly, we start taking positions early in the calendar year, like January, the first week.
I agree. I think the earlier we can meet on, on each item, the better off we are. And so in that regard of not coming up with a thousand different goals and objectives, from my point of view, I took the message to highlight the ones that I see as a priority. But of course, everybody has their ability to add to those, but I don't have anything to.
That would be my one. That's a major thought.
I agree with that, with that too. I'd rather have fewer that we pay attention to than, than have too many.
So I guess, you know, if you want to just send me just a sentence or two, just, you know, so I can incorporate it and we can finalize it.
I just had two comments. Number one to that end, the chair has requested and we have scheduled for the next meeting on the 22nd to get more people together. So we will have hopefully FinCom representation and capital outlay representation. But the way the charter is kind of designed here is that we do the capital budget first with a focus of kind of finishing that by January. And then the operating budget, I don't officially present that until February. I think the first meeting in February. So, you know, I just, the board may want to have almost two deadlines for, you know, figuring out what you want to do with capital first and then figuring out what priorities you want to have for the operating.
Yeah.
So I just at least throw that out in terms of the way this, the structure of the time period.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, the, what I was trying to say wasn't that there were two big globs. One was capital and one was non-capital. I was saying that the warrant itself, you know, we, we seem to be waiting, 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 and waiting. And all of a sudden, we had to vote the whole warrant in the last two weeks before our deadline. If it's got 72 articles, there's no reason at all where we can't start earlier and taking positions especially on the low hanging fruit. We, we get rid of those so we have time to have the discussions about bigger things that we want to. I, I don't know about anybody else, but it was dizzying at the end last year.
I agree.
Well, Ed raised the issue several times last year, so.
What?
That we moved ahead and then we couldn't go back and we didn't vote in time, so we did this bundle.
Yeah, we ran out of time. We really did.
Ran out of time.
Well, you know, in previous years, you know, we, the, the deadline for the warrant articles was in October. I, I mean, in January, the first Friday in January, was it? And we moved that to the first Friday in February. But when it was the first Friday in January, we would be reviewing the articles as they were being proposed back in November and December. So we could go over language and make sure it said what we wanted it to say rather than getting to the articles having been submitted. And once they're submitted, technically, under the charter language, you can't alter the language of the articles. So then you have to then go to town meeting with, with a motion that sort of corrects it as long as it's within the scope of what the article says. And sometimes it's a stretch. And it would be much better to correct the language upfront and get the articles finalized. Or at least, you know, whether or not we eventually support it, at least with language that if it does go forward, it's correct and proper.
It's been reviewed.
And has the, does the intent that we, we want, want, have done.
I, I think just, you know, one of the things that we try to do just organizationally is once we do the calendar, which we share the calendar. So if you do want to have, and I think it's a great suggestion. I was looking at the calendar the other day and I think citizen petitions are due in the second week in February. And if people have ideas that they want to submit and get concepts in, you know, there should be an additional pre-step that if you're thinking about submitting articles, you know, give us, give us some sense so that way we can make those adjustments. So I, I think, you know, it's really the board calendar that we lay out. And if there's things that you want to try to have, I think administratively, a, as I'm able, you know, we'll try to get things in that are kind of boilerplate, things that we know that are in, in the pipeline. So maybe we can vote the boilerplate material a little bit sooner and then focus on those issues that come up each year as they, as they relate.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Any way we can be better prepared.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement. We, we saw the fire drill last year and that wasn't that much fun. So I would, I would only suggest that, I think, Chris, you may bundle things to get it to KP. It might make sense if we're going to do low hanging fruit in some of these. We, we also send those when they're ready so we can move ahead rather than, because that in some ways kind of holds us back too.
So I think overall, we're, it's a collective agreement that you don't need us to take any type of.
I, I think it would be helpful is, you know, if, if you could look at the budget calendar and see, you know, instead of, I mean, we're, we're just kind of adhering to the charter. So it says thou shall make sure that all citizen petitions are in by the second week in February. If you want them earlier, I don't see there's a reason why you can't ask for them earlier.
Right. Well, I think we, you know.
If they're not.
I, I'm not so concerned with, with the private petitions.
You're talking about?
I'm talking about stuff that's generated from the committees and the staff.
Okay.
You know, if, if somebody, when they're putting together their budget in, in late October or November says, well, I, I'm going to request an article on this and so. It should be on, on, on our agenda the next week or two so we can review it. So it, we understand and, and make sure it, it says what we want it to say. And then it can go to, to KP for review. But to have, 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 have something that we haven't reviewed go to KP and then change it into something that's legal and it comes back and it's rather than a horse, it's a camel at that point because we've never had a chance to review it.
Well, maybe also what we could do is going forward, and, you know, maybe once, either once a month or twice a month, as we start, as we start to have, you know, various pieces come in, is we have it as a standing thing on our agenda. And if there's nothing to do, then, you know, if there's nothing to review at that point, but that we don't miss that opportunity to have it as a standing item. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to be clear, I guess, than what I was before. There's two things going on. The articles get submitted and we either agree, not the petition ones, that, that's a whole separate discussion. But they get submitted and we decide whether we want to include them or not. But we also have to take a position about whether we support them or not. And so there's like two parts to that. The petition articles, the only thing we can do is take a position because they are on the warrant, regardless of how we feel about their inclusion. That's the whole point of a petition. As a, as a clear example of how this just fell apart and why it should be a goal to make this earlier, more coherent, we tried to have a charter change, or it was a bylaw change, to designate the water as the wastewater commissioners. By the time we got to town meeting, we had thought of everything except for, oh, I don't know, talking to the water commissioners. So it was such a mad race that we missed things. We missed a lot of things. All I'm saying is if we came up with a summary goal that we are going to do better about pulling everything back and act as we can, that may mean tweaking language, it may mean a whole bunch of things, but move the process back so that we have time to make some, a studied view of this as opposed to just, I remember last year, it was like, we were taking chunks of it and making motions to, do we agree to articles one through 28? That's not the way we should be doing business ultimately, because it's just willy-nilly then.
Right. And I think, again, to that point is that if we've got stuff coming in, we should start looking at it as it comes in. So rather than, you know, say, we'll have this conversation and then not have it again for a month or.
Standing, standing.
So let's just have a standing spot on our agenda so that you, and, you know, each week you can let us know. If you've got something, if you don't, then that's fine, but at least it's on our agenda.
Yeah, I think one of the things maybe I can do is just as we're developing the capital budget and it looks like we're going to do things, then maybe we'll draft the language for the warrant articles and, and try to, you know, take it in two pieces and that may make it a little bit more manageable too.
But so back to the item on our agenda, which is goals and objectives. I would ask that everybody get me, even if it's just a sentence or two, so that I can incorporate it, finalize it, and we can be done with that piece.
I'm with Larry, though. It shouldn't be 120 goals.
Right. No, and, and, you know, I think you could see from mine.
No, Madam Chair, if you wanted to just, and I'm happy to do this, just go through the highlights that you had in that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Just, again, we're reading it. Not everyone, not everyone sees this. So the selectmen desired to have a budget that is within Proposition 2 and 1/2 without the need for a general override. And that's kind of one, one, one item here. Avoid the use of capital exclusions and limit the use of debt exclusions with the acknowledgement of the, the traditional road maintenance program and the lower county initiative. That the selectmen will adopt, lead the initiative to adopting the accessory use apartment zoning bylaw to assist property owners in providing supplemental income into age and place. Selectmen will work with the Affordable Housing Trust to identify parcels for affordable and workforce housing. Continue the efforts with the DHY Community Partnership. Establish broad policy on employee retention. Work closely with the Chamber of Commerce to promote the town of Harwich in need of its local business. I do have a comment that I'd like to make at the end on that one. To consider the wastewater reserve fund relative to helping to, to fund the sewer project. Wastewater communication to residents to ensure consistent message and information is sent to citizens. To work with the municipal county commission to address IT needs. Continue oversight of departmental overtime. Increase stabilization and reserve fund balances to meet reserve policy objectives. And to continue to fund OPEB and look at rising healthcare costs. I mean, those are what you just highlighted. And I think if we were to bullet point those as more concrete, that may be a starting point.
Right. Go ahead, Don.
And, and that's great, but I'm looking at this goals and objectives as kind of like writing a paragraph with an inverted pyramid. We need to aggregate some of those under headings because they don't, they don't all need to be separately issued because we are totally going to get lost with what was just said there unless we can talk about, you know, address wastewater issues and then subrinally talk about.
Right, and you can break them down, but I mean, the goals and objectives are, you know, sort of are, are the identifying factors from the budget message there. And then those are, so for that, from that perspective, those are the ones I'm saying are priorities. But I'm asking you to give me your priorities, all, everybody, so that we can then complete it. Right now, you have a piece of it.
And I'll do that. I'm going to follow Don's recommendation, have goals and then tactics to get to the goals. So you have a category, you know, because some of these fall into not goals themselves, but they're how we're going to meet our goals. So that's the simple.
Right, but I think we also need to be careful of, we've got certain topics that are, you know, what we're identifying and then.
Same thing, yeah.
Right, but we also don't want, like, I think a couple of years, I don't know if it was last year or the previous year, we had a multitude of goals. You know, I, I don't think that we met a lot of them. Yeah, it was a huge amount. So I think what I'm trying to encourage is to say, let's look at our goals and objectives. Let's look at our budget message. I mean, the budget message comes first and we're saying what our message is and then what are the goals within that. So whether it's in a paragraph form with bullets or what, but just let's get the language finalized and let's get it out there, so. That's, that's all I'm asking. So if we can just buy this, you know, this week, if you'd get it to me so that we could finalize it. Because going forward with the discussions we just had this evening is we're trying to move things back so that we can start deciphering things and fielding questions in language. And in order to do all that, we need to understand, you know, all, all of these pieces of information, which at, at times, and as we go further into the season, is going to get more and more intense in terms of pieces to read and decipher. So that's all I'm asking. Okay, on to, now on contracts, we're going to hold the approval of agreement with CDM Smith, Inc. for Colebrook Nitrogen.
Could I just make one comment in regards to that? There's, there's a couple of components to, to the proj, to this project. And basically what it is, the, the key component to this is that it's going to be someone else's project to do and we're going to partner with HCT. And the one element in here, it's task 1.4 and it's developed the MOU for how we are formally going to make that partnership work. One of the things I may ask the consultant to do is to see if we can get that voted kind of first. You know, keep within the context of 119,800. I have no problem delaying the vote till next week. But I do want to kind of just make sure the board is focused that for us to really move forward with that project, we need to establish that memorandum of understanding for how we're going to move forward with them. So if that could be considered a priority item for the next meeting or so, that would be, that would be helpful to moving that project forward, continuing to move that project.
Don?
I want to drop a shoe into this discussion. The question I have, and I would like, I don't want it tonight, but I do expect to have it eventually, is are we going to engage in CDM Smith without any RFPs for all things sewer and wastewater from here on forever? Or is there a delineation and some edges to this? Because Colebrook is a attenuation project. It's, it's not a sewer project. And I am just curious about at what point, because we're starting to add change orders that exceed the original contract amount. And I'm just curious about where the scope begins and ends. Again, it's not, it's not a discussion that I need an answer to tonight, but I would like to know if we contemplate always using them forever.
Chris?
Not to, not to have too long of a discussion, but at least the, this administrator and the way I view things is, once you have somebody that's done the design work, that's done the studies, they should finish. And I think having, having CDM finish Phase 2 makes a lot of sense. What happens for Phase 3 and Phase 4, you know, I think we want to kind of see how we move forward. In terms of the procurement, design is actually exempted from procurement. So we can go with the, the party that we believe makes the most sense to, to partner up with. You know, we've come a long way with them and I've had these discussions with Dave Young that there should be no check that they're going to have all the work from now to Phase 8. So, you know, but where does it make logical sense to transition if we're going to consider transitioning? And at least from my stance, if you hire someone in midstream, they're going to redo everything because one's not going to just take the work of another one. And that we would look at doing that at the end of Phase 2.
Larry?
Possibly related to Don's point, but when you come next week, I'd like to have some details on, on the work that's done and the costing for that. Because, you know, originally, we were thinking this work would be $75,000 to do the design and stuff. It's grown a lot since then. And my concern as we've been going forward is we, we're on a broken marriage, if you will, now. You know, instead of working hand in hand with HCT, it seems like we're spending this money to negotiate with them over and over again to try to get to an endpoint that we're happy with. So I'd like to better understand what we've spent money in the past and how CDM Smith is going to, is going to come to a conclusion on this work going forward. Because I, I remain concerned that, and I know the answer in the affirmative that we were, we're okay, but I'm still concerned that we aren't allowing the, the water bodies to remove nitrogen that we've looked at in our CWMP. But my major concern is, is the money we're spending basically negotiating, which we hope would be a, a straight line path to, to, you know, protect the wetlands and, and lower nitrogen. So I'd like a better understanding of how the money, the use of the money, basically.
Just to, to make sure the record's clear, the original contract with CDM, we have $2 million has been, has been appropriated or had been authorized. We have spent $35,000. The $35,000 has worked with consultants to do the analysis to see, will the ponds remove more nitrogen than a bog and so on? Will we get the desired impact? And that is kind of based upon the feasibility, not feasibility, the Colebrook study, the, the study that was done over two years when I first started. What this is, is to formalize, contractually figure out a formal relationship between Harwich and HCT to move forward. The design work is going to be shared with the HCT and the construction costs would be shared. Some of this is just almost like an OPM, kind of what's being advocated for, for some of these others. Is, but I'll have, maybe I'll have David. Some of this is just almost like an O P M, kind of what's being advocated for, for some of these others, is, but I'll have, maybe I'll have Dave Young come out and watch.
Yeah, I guess my discomfort is we're spending a tremendous amount of money, which should be a, a straightforward agreement.
But we haven't changed the, the numbers, correct?
The original estimate from S Mass to do their design and, you know, all that was like seventy-five thousand dollars. The town appropriated more than that to do. But we've, it gets confusing because we've talked about people who come with different costs, and it keeps, I, I think I'd like a better understanding of what the steps are on that.
Yeah, I, I just.
Because I was looking at the original report today from S Mass, and they were, they, they've thrown out a figure of seventy-five thousand dollars to do a lot of this work. It's grown from that, and now we're spending money, not, not in the design, but negotiating how we're going to work with H C T. And I don't want, I want to be sure we're not spending an enormous amount of money on deciding how we're going to work with a colleague of ours in town. That, that's what I, that seems to be wasted money for me.
Out of the total of this, though, it's one hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred. Eight thousand dollars is to help with the negotiation on the, yeah, putting together a, a, a M O U. And that would probably be how we're going to spend three million dollars.
So eight thousand dollars on figuring out how to spend.
Figure out the relationship.
And, and going.
It's state agency, it's a, it's H C T, and it's the town. So it's, it has a little level of complexity to it that's a little beyond my pay grade to do on my own.
Right, right. And also in terms of the, the other question about C D M and where we stand going forward, I think it's really important to, for all of us to remember exactly what Chris said, which is that, you know, if we try to look back like now at changing before we get out of this phase, I mean, you're going to have much more increased costs because one engineer's firm is not going to rely on the other engineering firm's statistics and numbers and topography and all elevations, all of that. So you, now we're going to go back and recreate some of the, the same work that's already been done for us. So I, we want to be careful on that. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, a couple of things. Let me take that first. I understand that, but if you use that rationale with, say, military procurements, you'd never actually get a different contractor for anything. It would always wind up being the same aircraft manufacturer, the same ship builder. All I was asking for is, and apparently that's the answer. All I was asking for is, where are the edges here? I mean, are we just going to incrementally keep awarding the same engineer? And apparently, if it's within these phases, it doesn't matter where it is, we are. And I'm not so sure if that's a wise move necessarily. Plus which, I'm looking at this agreement, and I'm hoping that next week's, get that clarified. We use words sometimes loosely, and I understand that we own the project, but we don't own the land. And it keeps saying owner, 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 and you're really talking about the relationship between the town of Harwich as the owner of the attenuation project and C D M Smith. You're not saying, because the owner of the property is technically the trust. And that should be defined somewhere in here about what it is that owner means.
Well, I, I think this is, and that's why it's a little bit complicated, that we will have a contractual relationship with C D M to assist in how H C T, the town, and D E R, the state agency, do the overall project. So we would be viewed as the owner because C D M is working for us as the owner. But it's that partnership agreement, the, the three, the three parties, that then is, which is what the M O U is going to lay out, that will then dictate the roles of each. And the role in terms of construction, as I see it, would be strictly those elements that have been driven by the biology and by the testing that we've done that will have the nitrogen attenuation elements that the town voted for when it asked for this money to be done originally.
The problem with contracts is that protests are, are actually born out of inartful language. I'm just saying, somewhere in this thing, you may want to, in less than two thousand words, define what owner is. And I, I inferred from this in reading it ultimately, that the owner that we were talking about is town of Harwich is the owner of the project, but it clearly wasn't the owner of the property because we don't own the property, and we never are going to own the property.
So the only other thing I want to say here, well, go ahead, because I, I don't want to continue to talk about this because we were holding it so that we could also have that discussion while Michael was back. So without going much further.
Well, at the, the very beginning, it says this is an agreement made as of date between the town of Harwich, Massachusetts owner and C D M Smith, Inc. engineer. Owner's project is generally defined as the, as follows, Colebrook Nitrogen attenuation project, the project. And I think that pretty well identifies what the roles are.
I didn't say anything about the land.
Okay, so let's, let's bring this back because we've talked about it enough for having pulls it. Okay, B, amendment number one, wastewater program, Phase Two engineering services during construction. And go ahead, Chris.
So I'll provide an overview on this. Just in terms of this, this is basically, the, the town did receive this contract before. It was the board that asked to have the, this kind of apportioned out. So the initial authorization to do the work here was two million, two million twenty thousand dollars. What that accomplished for the town was the survey work, the preliminary design, the final design, and the bidding to bid out. Now, this is the East Harwich project. Actually, I've been saying eight miles of pipe. I was corrected the other night. I think it was almost closer to fourteen miles of pipe they're actually going to put in the ground. And seven pump stations now. So the, the board wanted to break out the two components, so this was the one component to do the design. So these numbers have not changed from what was presented before. So the two other elements that this, they're calling it amendment number one, which is really just a secondary authorization to what was already, the overall contract was known and only partially awarded. So this is the second part, is construction administration, which is six hundred and ten thousand. And then the resident inspection, which is one million six hundred and eighty thousand for a total of two million two hundred and ninety thousand. That sounds like a lot of money, but I think one thing that's important, what the resident inspection work will entail is for all fourteen miles of pipe that gets installed, it will be inspected as it goes. So we will have an inspector to make sure that whoever the contractor is doing the work will be there. So the resident inspection is going to be very labor intensive. I think the other part that that resident inspection work is going to get is each of these six hundred and fifty properties that are going to look to tie in are going to have to have a discussion with a resident inspection person to go through how those tie-ins are going to occur. So this component, it is definitely a bigger number, but over a two-year construction cycle, fourteen miles of pipe are going to be inspected. The seven pump stations are going to be inspected, all the testing to make sure that this all works as designed. And then the meetings with the individual residents to make sure that their lateral connections are going to, you know, be appropriate. That's what's entailed in this. So yes, it is, it is a big number, but from a labor standpoint, and, and really from a time and material, it is going to be an extensive project. And the one thing, this is a little bit more time sensitive, too, because today is the day that we, the application is being submitted for funding with S R F. And I think S R F, in order to kind of line things up and to get us going for doing the bid work, you know, is going to want to make sure that we have these, these bases covered and that these contracts are in place. So just to give a, a little bit of an overview, it'll be two, two years' worth of inspection. It will be fourteen miles of pipe, seven pump stations, as well as, I don't know if it's going to be six hundred and fifty visits because I know there's about seventy of those properties that currently don't have any, any buildings on them. But this is going to be labor intensive, and I think that this is appropriate, and they did not adjust the price. They have kept the price from what they originally had sent.
So just a question on, on that, in terms of that, that oversight. So once a person has their overall design for their property, they then would have, that inspector would be looking at that lateral connection to make sure that everything's going to work properly?
Yeah, this is a, a great opportunity because this was kind of confusing for people, I think, when we had that meeting over at the, at the cultural center. This inspector is just going to do the work relevant to the pipe being installed in the street. So his primary focus would be the pipe in the street. He will then go back, and this is where he will coordinate with the resident to see if the lateral going from the pipe in the street to the property line is then done at the appropriate height, and does it make sense for both parties? So that coordination will occur where they'll say where that pipe will end up. The resident, and, and I think Don had brought this up at that meeting, it's a great point. The resident is going to have their own engineer, or hopefully sanitarium, that will be looking on their side so they know where the pipe is on the town right away to then where to connect that up. So the, it's kind of two engineers working together
Right.
to, to make sure that things line up. And then it will be the licensed utility installer, as opposed to us, where we'll have the contractor doing our work in the street. The homeowner will have their licensed utility installer then install the pipe consistent with the plan. If everything goes accordingly, then the pipe should match up and have the appropriate slope necessary to, to have it function appropriately.
So that leads me to my next question. So let's just say you have your, your engineer do your design. And the design that, the, the draft designs, which we know can change slightly, right, based on, right?
Actually, we had a, a more detailed discussion, and Dan Pelletier today really did a good job of kind of simplifying it for me. And one of the things that he had, he had pointed out is the pipe is going to be in the street. So the, the pipe will be, let's just say, twelve feet down. How, if a, if a resident has a home that's on a slope, well, how do you get that pipe with enough cover so it doesn't freeze, you know, during the wintertime? So you could have people that will have very different designs coming out of their house to then match up with what can we do with the pipe in the street to get to the height that's needed to make that connection. And we actually did look, and I, I think we will do this, that once we get the full set of plans, we will hopefully have those full set of plans tomorrow or the next day. I'm going to have our internal people, water department and the health people, will go through. And looking at the plans, probably about ninety-five percent of them are going to have that ten-foot separation, and it should be fairly straightforward. But there are going to be some that, just looking at the plans that we already have, where there's not a lot of difference. So they may need to move the pipe and try to hit a manhole where maybe they can come in a little bit steeper so they can avoid having a, a pump in the individual home. So I, I think there's going to be some individual decisions based upon, you know, how the house is situated, where the, where the septic is situated. And I thought that the elevations would be fairly close, but in some cases, just because of the geography, the house could be twenty feet high, and the pipe is still the ten feet under, in, in the ground. But you could have a thirty-foot difference between some of those properties.
So, so that's my point, though, is so if we're, if we're looking at that and reviewing that once we've got the, the design, and we know that there may be instances where we've got a discrepancy, are we going to then reach out to those particular homeowners to say, in, in this instance where we're talking about doing something proactively, that they should be doing something proactively?
Well, I, I think that, and we had that discussion today, having kind of the pipe be put in the ground and kind of knowing what the situation is, that the resident inspector will probably be in touch with the homeowner to say, you may have options where instead of coming out of the left side of your house, you may want to come out the right side, and you may have to feed directly into a manhole as opposed to the pipe because of the elevation concerns. So I think we will try to target those homes that appear to be more problematic and try to, you know, reach out to make sure that we do focus on those that are going to have those issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should certainly do that because if something's going to be a little more problematic, it may all, also be more costly. And so the more time people have to prepare for that and understand it, the better off they're going to be. And maybe it won't be more costly, but at least if it's going to be a little more.
Maybe more on our side, the town's side.
Right.
If we have an extra manhole so somebody can plug in, that's going to have an additional cost. How deep do you go with the manhole? So there is some engineering, and it's that, the construction administration and that resident inspection where those adjustments are going to be made in the field.
Okay. Any questions? Larry?
One of my favorite questions I've emailed to you a couple of times, Chris, and that is, I think you said in the past you were going to put up the CAD survey data on the website so I'd be accessible to anyone who wanted it. Is that up there yet?
No, actually, and just what, what we, and actually, today was actually very educational. I think presenting information that's still basically concepts may not be the wisest thing. I think by having people come in and look at the sill that they have in the house and look at where the pipe is, and having someone be able to walk through that. Because one of the things that I'm concerned about is, we, we do have information on where your water tie card is that's already online. And happy to announce that G I S will be operational by this Friday.
Right.
So I, I had a meeting to kind of unclog things. And then the septic plan would also be available to people. The issue is that the elevations that people will take, if, if someone installed a septic system, they may use a, a different, if you would, a, a different elevation to start with. So they may come into a house and say it's elevation a hundred. In reality, it may be elevation eighty-five. So I think we're going to kind of confuse people if we, if we do two sets of information. So we will have the plans, and we will make plans available in different locations for people to come in and look in a neighborhood if they want to hire somebody. They can come in and go through the plans and, and get that. But they need to know that those plans will be tweaked as that construction occurs.
Yeah, I may be misunderstanding. I thought there were two, two categories. One was the survey data itself, which is only the topography and, you know, the system report.
Yes, that we should have online, yes.
And then the second part was, you know, whoever's, whether it's, you know, C D M Smith or so on, developing the plans you're talking about is the next level. And I can see why you don't want to release those. My understanding was you're going to release the survey data and put that on site so anyone could look at it that wished to get it.
I think the way you said it is, is my understanding, too.
Because those aren't dependent on any, I mean, that, that is what it is, the survey data.
Is that topography online? Is it on the wastewater?
I think we'll, we'll make sure it's on there.
Yeah, because I don't think it's on there yet.
I can't find it down.
No, I don't think it's there.
Okay.
So that's my point, Chris. I think yours is on the plan. I, I agree on that.
Yeah, I just wanted, I kind of take this as an opportunity to educate folks in terms of what we're doing so they know what we're going to see.
Okay, so currently we have, oh, sorry, did anyone have any other further questions or comments? So we have.
Only one comment. I, I'd be interested to get a copy of the S R F submission, just for, I think the board's information because that's a, that's an important factor for us and for the wastewater support group as well.
Good idea, right. So we have amendment number one, the wastewater program, Phase Two engineering services during construction. So can I get a motion? Because do you want us to go ahead and?
Yeah, I would like to have the, a vote, and just the construction administration number would be six hundred and ten thousand, and the resident inspection would be one million six hundred and eighty thousand for a total of two million two hundred and ninety thousand. And this is all within the appropriation that was made at town meeting.
Can I get lazy and so move with existing numbers that Chris has cited this?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Oh, Don?
I was hoping that Michael could be part of the discussion, but I hate to be natty, but this is like a broken record here. I don't care that it was appropriated because appropriations don't mean spending. Appropriations just mean it's available. What I would really like to see in any of the amendments or any contract is a summary like the one you gave us verbally, but that could be in the packets so the public could see it, too, an explanation of why it is we're spending your money and where it is we're spending it. And absent that, and since this is going on over and over again, I'm not going to vote for this.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Vote to adopt Green Communities Energy Reduction Plan.
So I'm actually not going to speak very much on this. We have two folks that are available. As the board will know, we are engaged in trying to become a green community, and there are a few things. One of the last remaining hurdles that we have.
Uh, and there are a few things. One of the last remaining hurdles that we have to go over is that there had to be a, uh, an energy plan that was put together that has a twenty percent reduction uh, over a five-year period. And the, the two folks that have worked more diligently on this, I certainly have not, um, not that I don't work diligently, but just not on this topic. Uh, Margaret and, uh, and Evan, uh, can speak to, uh, what their work has done and, and how we would potentially achieve the, uh, reductions sought in the green communities.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Evan.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Evan Malolo, Assistant Town Administrator. Um, and, and just, uh, credit where credit is, is due on, on this piece. This is a, a highly technical piece. And Facilities Director Sean Libby, um, and, and Margaret here from the Cape Light Compact do deserve the, the lion's share on this criteria. So, uh, as Chris alluded to, this is criteria three out of five total. Uh, this is the last one before the submission, um, can be made. Uh, so with a positive vote tonight, uh, we've set up a time where we could submit this on Friday. Uh, also, as Chris alluded to, this is a plan to reduce energy, uh, in the town by twenty percent over five years. Now, this is aspirational. If we do not get there in five years, they're not revoking all the money that they've given us. Just to go through, uh, the document a little bit, there were approximately four percent of the savings, uh, through vehicles. Uh, I contributed to that part, since the town voted the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. Um, I, I helped compute, um, how replacing, um, adding nine vehicles to the fleet through replacements of current vehicles, um, would, would contribute to that. Um, and then there were, uh, eleven percent through buildings, uh, very much the lion's share of it. And, and hence why I, you know, thanked, um, thanked Sean Libby. Not to leave, uh, Charlene Greenhout out, 'cause she's, uh, also been helping us as well. And I will open it up to, uh, any feedback that you have. But maybe first, uh, I'll just go through, uh, the timeline a little bit on, uh, on the rest of this application. So as I said, a positive, uh, vote tonight will allow us to, um, to complete the application this Friday, uh, as all five criteria will be done. At that point, uh, we will not hear too much for a while. On February, by February eighth, um, that is when the deadline is, um, once you become, uh, a green community, all right? Um, and then in May is the announcement of the award, okay? And we do, uh, project the award to be in the hundred and forty to hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. And generally how that's done is it's twenty-five percent upfront. Uh, we've got fifty percent, uh, upon showing progress, and the remaining twenty-five percent, uh, when you're done reporting. And I look forward to any comments or, or, or feedback that you have. If it does get a little too technical, I will, uh, ask Margaret to come up.
Thank you, Evan. Questions, comments? Larry?
I have one, uh, question, 'cause you, uh, yeah, you're right, you buried me in too much detail. Can you, uh, can you come back with us? I'm just interested in what the total cost will be for us to, uh, to do all these actions. You know, we know there's a cost. We talked about the cars. You know, the other things you're purchasing to save energy, I, you know, maybe just a very brief summary of what the general category is and what it's cost us to save this. It's probably on this, uh, yellow tables in front of me, but I didn't, uh, I couldn't pick it all out, uh, or didn't take the time to.
I was just curious to, to that question. I think it's a great question. I know the Cultural Center was one of the primary focal points of, uh, potential savings. And, and maybe, 'cause I, I read through the material and was a little lost myself, Larry. But maybe we can have Margaret walk us through what some of those concepts mean.
Come back. This was a very brief, you know, cost benefit now.
'Cause I think we do have a deadline submission of this Friday to make sure we get.
Well, I, I think it's too far gone. I'm gonna vote for it. I'd just like to know what the cost is and, uh.
Good evening, Margaret.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Margaret Song, as Evan said. Um, so the estimate right now is that you would be at one point six million dollars if you did all of this. Um, but I think just to reiterate what Evan said earlier, um, this is the full universe. Um, and what eventually would happen, um, and what most of the towns have seen is that between Cape Light Compact's incentives, National Grid's incentives, safer buildings, and then Green Communities, the idea is to have little to no cost of the town's money to actually make these things happen. So even with, say, vehicle charging stations or vehicles, up to two per year, they have grant funds to do that. And so the idea is that if you guys are able to effectively use these dollars, that there may be very little to no, um, outlay from the community.
Thank you.
Does I, uh, are you implying then that, uh, we, we will base our actions on our, our spending on when we get grant money to do so?
So the town can choose, and you all can choose to do whatever you would like. Um, but that is how other towns have chosen to, uh, move forward, is that as grant funds become available, um, they look at all the projects. Um, some might be prioritized for different reasons, like the Cultural Center was one of the biggest opportunities that you have. Uh, because you have a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can choose whatever in this list that you want. Um, we would ask for approval and then move forward. But there's nothing that says that you have to put in one point six million dollars, just to, just to get to your point.
Okay. Uh, Chris, did you?
I just, can, can you just, I, my understanding was that we would do boiler replacement, insulation. Can you give a few examples of the type work that we would be engaged in to realize some of those things?
Sure. So, um, for example, in the Cultural Center, I actually just got, um, a quote today for the lighting. You know, there would be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Most of that would be paid for by the Cape Light Compact, and the remainder of that you would potentially ask for, um, Green Communities money. And you would see the savings at no cost, additional cost to your ratepayers. Um, but Chris is right. It's, it's a lot of boilers, um, a lot of capital projects that Sean's been trying to work on. He's been doing a great job, so actually it was a little bit hard to get some of the savings 'cause he's done so many things already in the community. Um, but the Cultural Center, because you guys have recently re-adopted that, um, was a, was a really good opportunity there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Don?
Not so much a question, but just, just for the public because, uh, in just hearing that last, uh, response, we have done a bunch of things. So, I mean, the, the problem here is, uh, it includes streetlights as one of the, uh, potential areas where we could capture something, but we've aggressively moved into LED lighting. We don't have a lot of traffic lights, but we've moved into LED lighting with those likewise. So, I mean, we, we have to go into other areas. I, I, I do know that even though, uh, fluorescents were considered to be efficient, I mean, LEDs, uh, are a savings area for them also. But, I mean, I, if, if you're talking electricity, pretty much you're left with, uh, pumps, heavy motors, compressors, that kinda stuff.
And Sean has already done a lot of those. Um, but it is natural gas, um, heating oil, where you don't have a lot of those. Um, uh, electricity and then fuels for vehicles.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ed? Ned? Okay. You're good? Okay, so, uh, back to, uh.
Do you need a motion to accept the plan as presented?
Some vote.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And old business, uh, the Economic Development Committee status. Overall, we talked about starting an Economic Development Committee. And then we also talked about the idea of the, um, the people who are interested in doing the Harwich, um, committee, which we talked about, was that last week or the week?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. So that brought this back up too. And, and to see where we are with it. But I think overall, it's, do you wanna talk to it?
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, uh, obviously, I, I really feel for the board. My last town, I had to, uh, actually put people onto boards and committees. And when you have, you know, fifty boards and committees and you have five people, I mean, it's, it's a task to be able to fill all these. And one of the things that I had done in my, uh, last community was, and I had offered this initially to the, uh, to the Board of Selectmen, uh, but just what I would recommend is to, to have a group of us that would go and just talk to the business owners. And what I did in, in my last town was, and I think I went by myself, I, I don't think I had any, any company with me. But I asked the, the companies, what are we doing well? What do, what do we, what can we do better? And what do you need in order to, and why are you still here? And give them a chance to kinda talk a little bit about why they're successful in our town and how can we create those conditions for success for hopefully other businesses to be able to locate here. And I know that Cindy and I have, have talked, we meet about, uh, once a month to kinda talk about this, uh, these type of ideas. Uh, and, you know, I think having a, a small group of people, uh, I'd love to have, uh, Cindy and I as a basis. And most people that have businesses in town do interconnect through the, through the chamber. Uh, so I think that that's a, a logical, uh, place to start. And then if a member of the Board of Selectmen wanted to join us, just to go around, and maybe, you know, we do our, um, bond rating, and we have the top ten list of the top ten employers, and maybe try in the next year to, to maybe go see three of them. And just find out what works in Harwich, what doesn't work in Harwich, and, and, you know, what, what are some of the things that we should be looking at to try to continue to promote business in the community. But that was the concept that I, I'd like to throw out to at least see. And then obviously, if it's a member of the board on it, then they could report back the results to some of those meetings.
Ed? Oh, I thought you had a question. So I guess I have a question, because we came up with the other committee to focus on Harwich Center. We have this committee that's really, doesn't have a status. So where we have Harwich Port and Harwich Center as our two vital areas, um, you know, I mean, of course, East Harwich and stuff, but whatever way we wanna divvy it up. But I'm wondering if we take the previous committee that we've just created, right? And try to say we've got focus in one spot and, and another, and collectively.
Uh, no.
You don't think so?
I don't, because.
Well, I don't know how we're gonna staff another committee.
I don't, well, if I may, Madam Chair, the, uh, uh, Harwich Center was specifically for this. And, and quite frankly, uh, I was approached with an interest of doing this. And I had a couple of meetings about it, but I, uh, my position was I was not gonna, uh, come back to the board with a rec, with a, uh, suggestion that was a committee unless I was assured that there were enough people interested to fill the committee. 'Cause I didn't want to end up having an empty committee. I, I, you know, and I was assured and have names that, you know, people were going out. And so I'm so comfortable that there's ready, in fact, right now I think there's more people interested in joining the committee than, but their focus is, is on, only on Harwich, on, on Harwich Center, I, I was.
So there's no divvying any?
No.
So there's no interest in Harwich Port?
I think it has to be isolated on this, 'cause that's been a discussion over the years on, you know, how we revitalize this. I, I like, uh, I think Chris has a good, I'm not sure I wanna commit to that, but if, if you could notify when you go out, I'd be, uh, I'd, I'd like to go out a few times.
Ed? Yeah, that's, you know, my, raising the finger when he suggested, um, having a, a selectman to go along. That's sort of what I was, what I'm here for.
Okay, good.
I wasn't anticipating doing a formal committee. I mean, this is just almost like a welcoming group, just not a welcoming, but i- information gathering exercise.
Right, and I didn't think you were proposing another committee. The fact that we have a committee that we can't even staff is, was, was my point to say, maybe we could.
That's a good idea, but this is so focused on, on Harwich Center.
If that's not what they wanna focus on, then, you know, the fact that they're willing to put their time and effort into that, I don't mean to take away from it. It was just a, a thought, so. And Cindy, uh, did you have some comments?
I think this is a great discussion. What I wanted to also point out is, um, we're very fortunate to have something that happens internally in Town Hall on Thursdays. It's called Community Development. And a lot of times what'll happen is if there's a new business that's interested in coming into Harwich, they'll come to this meeting. It's a great group of people that are the people that they will have to work with at some point down the road. Charlene, the town planner, also will call me and say, hey, we've got X, Y, Z company interested. So we've got a good base. What Chris's idea is, is a great idea, to go visit the existing companies. Something we have tried at a variety of chamber meetings is having, um, panels to let people know why, what's a good thing about being in business in Harwich and whatever, um, other steps as well. So certainly, we can continue doing those kind of outreaches as well, getting the members to come and share the good, the bad, and whatever. Um, because we can, we, you know, we don't also know all of the available buildings that say may be, um, available, or that may be coming up soon, that people wanna rent. You know, there's a couple right here in Harwich Center that possibly could be. So maybe developing a spreadsheet of that. So then when we have someone that may stop in to see me, or stop in to see Charlene, we all know what's, where we can jump and go forward. So, um, I think we have a great part already. Like you said, we have so many committees, and we're all reaching out numerously to the different outlets that we all have to get people to join those committees. Um, the one that we're doing in a couple of weeks with the Initiative for Harwich Center. It's a great opportunity to revitalize up here and to show everyone that wants to come into Harwich, 'cause they do. There are a lot of people that wanna have business here. We're now gonna be revitalizing a beautiful area. And who knows what'll happen in other parts of, uh, you know, our seven villages. We have to remember, Harwich has seven villages. And each one has something very special, um, to offer to a variety of different businesses, um, entrepreneurs, et cetera. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Cindy. Uh, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I think that what Janelle was trying to do was commendable. And I try to look at this in terms of what she thought the objective was. And the committee's not the objective, it's a means to an objective. We had informally agreed that we were gonna try to pare down committees. It, if anything, if you step back and look at this for a second, this actually creates another layer in between the people who actually have the chance to do something. Because pretty much when people wanna locate businesses, they don't wanna go to a committee that has to go check with the boss so they can come back to them again in the committee. They wanna get an answer about, is this possible? And what kind of relief would I need to make this happen? If anything, we've, we've tried our hardest. I, Janelle has submitted an application, but only Janelle has submitted an application. Uh, w- we have continuously talked about, you know, we've got openings in this committee, and no one stepped forward. Uh, this seems to be a much more practical way of doing it as opposed to just, hey, let's create a committee. Uh, because we've been good over that in the last fifteen or so years, but they never go away, ever. So I'm, I'm with Larry. The one in Harwich Center, it has its own peculiar problems. If Ed wants to get involved, uh, you know, the Harwich Port component of this with the chamber with the, the administrator, I think that's probably the way to go, is to cut through everything and just say, okay, so you're interested in Harwich? Let's talk.
So do we have to, um, well, I, it's not the motion that, I guess I don't wanna go down that road of discussion.
Yeah, I don't think that would be, uh, just as long as the board's aware that I'll start to engage in that activity, and I will invite selectmen as are available to join me. Which is the idea of one selectman to join me on the visit, so that way there's no open meeting.
And that can be primary. If he can't make it, you can, you know, get the rest of us.
And that can help your, that committee as well.
I heard two that had interest in it, so.
Yeah, but.
Okay, so.
It may be, uh, we may have to bite the bullet and have an agenda to disband the economic committee.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, but that's not on the agenda, right?
Bring it back to another agenda.
Right.
So just get, get rid of that.
We need to get rid of it. I mean, we were trying to clean them up to Don's point earlier, and we're trying to pare them down. So we might as well take care of it before people lose sight of the fact that it's just out there floating out with no members. Ed?
Well, Janelle. The Harwich Center Initiative Committee sat there floating for about, uh, fourteen years before it got, was taken up again.
That's my peep in government. We, I want action at an endpoint at some point.
But I think, you know, before we take action in the next two weeks to, uh, eliminate, uh, potentially the committee. to eliminate potentially the committee, we ought to let some discussion happen with the group that's being proposed and then see if they come up with what their conclusion is.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll just revisit it in a couple of weeks and see. Okay. So other than that, we're on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things this evening. Just a reminder, the DHY Clean Water Partnership Meeting, we have a meeting over at the Town of Dennis on October 25th, which is next week, next Thursday night at 6:00 PM at their Council on Aging. That is a group with the three different towns, having representatives from the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee as well as their wastewater group to kind of get an overview of the community partnership. I know Larry and I go to these ones, you know, once a month on Friday and are very familiar with it. But I think the opportunity to just have a overview of why we're doing this for the general public and for the larger groups of FinCom members and wastewater support makes a lot of sense.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we leave that subject, I would urge, not only that we post for us, but that everybody go. Because this is different. It's even different from the Friday meetings. This is going to have the opportunity for the tri-towns, including Mansfield and Roxboro, for us to give them questions about what happened when this occurred or can you tell, walk me through this problem. It's going to be televised and I was big on making sure that the FinCom and Capital Outlay were, you know, part of this because there's money involved. But it's really important, much more so than even the last one that we had.
If I may add to that, I did invite Dave Young at last Finance Committee meeting, giving an overview of the DHY. And they're going to post it, I think, to attend the meeting on... I'm going to be out of town, but I've heard it actually before. But so they're right. I didn't... I haven't had a chance to get involved with Capital Outlay, but I agree with Don's. It'd be great if you could contact them and...
I do have a meeting with them tomorrow night, so I can suggest that to them.
You might want to suggest them tomorrow during the day, be sure it's posted in time for... Well, it's the 25th, so they're okay.
Yeah, it's next week, next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
But I will bring that up tomorrow night to them.
Okay.
Okay.
Or tomorrow afternoon. And then as Richard Wastak had mentioned, we are... We did some initial round of interviews on the Council on Aging Director. Cautiously optimistic, so going to do a little bit of background checks and so on and hope to have a recommendation to the board in the not-too-distant future. In terms of other... I know I mentioned this at the beginning, but on our budget warrant timeline, we did submit, I believe, in the package a revised one that does show that on Monday, October 22nd, I will be submitting the initial cod, if you would, of the Capital Outlay Plan, of the requests that have been received. It's still going to be draft. I think there'll be some tweaks to it and you'll see that as I present that. But also, we have invited the Montomoy Regional School District Finance Committee and Capital Outlay to discuss kind of the state of the town, the selectmen's budget message, Montomoy to go over their budget projections and enrollment, to hear what the Finance Committee priorities are contemplated and the capital budget requests, and then maybe a discussion of an outlook for 2020. So those are the topics that we probably will just kind of cut and paste into the recommended agenda. If there's anything that you want to have changed, now's the time to consider doing.
Don?
I just threw you, Madam Chair. Would really like them to know, coming into the room last year when the Montomoy School District came in, it was under a heading of enrollment trends. They talked about a lot of things, money, facilities, all kinds of things. There's only one thing that they missed talking about, enrollment trends. So when they come in this time, I'd like them to be prepared to say what they believe their trends are for enrollment, whether that means transfer in or people who are age two, three, four years old that they are coming up and at least have some semblance of a review with our town planner and Chatham Town Planner because we're talking about affordable housing, which is probably going to result in the midterm at least, in more families with kids. But there was no data at all. I mean, it was just a discussion about what a great school it was and they need money. And if they're going to come in with enrollment trends, just forewarn them that we might want to know what those trends are.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I know, I think Ed and Larry attended their Saturday session and I thought they did have some enrollment pieces.
They did have some of that. They had some of the program discussion. We don't need that whole presentation, but to Don's point, we can pick and choose to answer some of those questions we're most interested in because we're not running a school. We want an overview of what the enrollment is and how it relates to the budget, the spending that we have to justify.
Right.
And I think those pieces were there.
I think those pieces were there too.
And to look at, you know, what the budget was last year and what it is this year and what are we looking at, you know, in terms of those costs? Are we looking at, you know, paying... We're talking raises in health insurance costs? Are we talking, you know, new acquisitions, whether they be capital? And again, we had that discussion, I think, last year about breaking those out. So, you know, I think we want to look at what the budget was last year, what we're talking about, you know, how that money was truly ended up being spent on what and what we're looking at this year, so...
That concludes my report this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Don?
I see you have the Housing Trust membership here listed on the agenda. We do not have the last member. We're trying to be really, really, really careful with this because this is another thing like CPC where citizens are going to wind up going out and recommending expenditures. And while enthusiasm is a great thing, we're also looking for some knowledge and not necessarily just be rooted in having three people who are all into zoning. So with that in mind, we're still looking... And it doesn't mean that anybody we've spoken to is out of contention, but it does mean we'd like to get the fullest possible look. And speaking as an infomercial for the interview committee, we still need a member of the Board of Health, same deal, very important.
I thought I had cornered a dentist in town to join, but he backed out today, so I'll go after... I go after another one.
And not to denigrate anyone, but we're not looking for a warm body. This is a really, really, really important regulatory...
I agree, but this guy has a good experience. I thought I had him cornered.
Okay.
Don, can I ask a question on the Housing Trust?
Yes.
Are you saying that you have to... I mean, zoning is an important issue, but you feel you have enough zoning representation on the trust now to... You're comfortable?
For sure. You have Larry Brophy and I came through the planning board myself.
Okay, because I know one applicant was a planner, which would have had a lot of expertise in that, but...
Yeah, but we didn't want to see it becoming a planner club.
Okay.
It's true. You've got to be careful.
Yeah, I'm just... Fine.
So again, doesn't mean, it precludes any of the previous people that we've interviewed, but we're trying to look for a mix of people that have a more universal look at this. Maybe a housing advocate or something.
Is that it, Don?
That's it, except for the fact that I am glad that I didn't get hit either time.
I liked the permanent resident idea.
On Friday, we had a monthly meeting of the Cape Cod Selectmen and Counselors Association down in Falmouth and the presentation was by Christie Senatori of the Cape Cod Commission on the draft of the update of the regional policy plan. I believe they're trying to make time to come, present it to each Board of Selectmen between now and the middle of November when the comment period will end. But it, I think, has the overview that was given by her and Erin Perry of the Commission was very interesting. A little bit change of focus from the last plan, a little bit return to be more in line with the original Cape Cod Commission Act, but also a look recommending some new strategies to take us into the future. So I look forward to having the presentation here and being able to make some comment on it.
And they're going to have... They have three different sessions too, right?
Yes, they do.
I was planning on attending the Eastham session.
Yep.
Because it sounds like there'll be a lot of good information.
Did I read, Ed, that that's going to... It's already... The draft is on their web?
Yep.
So you can't look at it?
You can look at it, but then they're going to have discussion further, right? To... I mean, I thought that would be helpful. Larry?
Ned?
Okay. I just want to remind everybody that the Voter Information Committee needs one member. Traffic Safety is in need of one member. And the boutique at the Harwich Community Center where children can go to pick out a Halloween costume is Thursday, October 18th from 5:00 to 8:00. And I have a bag to donate in my car.
Boutique.
The boutique.
I've bought enough candy for all of Harwich right now, which my wife always threatens to kick me out.
One last sort of announcement, I guess, is that on Monday at 8:30, early voting opens up. And so Monday through Friday that week and the following week, ending at 5:00 Friday, November 2nd, with the election day, obviously, Tuesday, November 6th.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.